Good evening, it is Monday, January 8th, 2018, and it is 7:00 PM. I'd like to call to order the first meeting of January of Speedway Town Council. My name's Jeff Matthews, I'm the President of the Town Council. Those joining me this evening are, to my far right, Eileen Fisher.
Good evening.
To my immediate right, Jason Delisle.
Good evening.
To my left, Vice President Dave Lindsey.
Good evening.
To his left, Gary Rakes.
Hello, Speedway.
To his, to his left, our Town Manager Jacob Blaisdell.
Gotcha.
Good evening.
Clerk Treasurer Monty Combs.
Nice to see you, Mr. President.
Well, thank you. And rounding out the team this evening is Town Attorney Bob Clutter.
Good evening.
The agenda has been posted, and we'll be following that this evening. And the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, approval of the Town Council meeting minutes dated December 28th, 2017. Were there any corrections or questions?
There were some corrections I gave to our Clerk Treasurer, and those have been made, which I believe has since been passed out to the council.
I concur.
Thank you, those will be approved as presented and corrected. Item number four, we're going to skip on over to Citizen of the Month. Connie, would you please come forward, please?
Jeff, just to reflect, we did not have an executive session on the 28th, so that's why you're skipping on.
That is correct, thank you. Thank you, Counselor.
I'm here to present the January Citizen of the Month, and that this year, or this month, Bob Lehman was nominated. And just a little information about Bob, if he wants to come forward, he has been a lifelong resident of the West Side, he's lived in Speedway for many years, he owns Indiana Memorial Creation and Funeral Care on West 10th. He is active in the Chamber, and Bob retired from the Speedway Police Department Reserve Division after 20 years of service, but he still remains a strong supporter of both the Speedway Police and the Fire Department, and he has made several donations on, to the police department's projects, and he remains the largest contributor to the DARE program. And Bob also spends much of his holiday working hours as Santa Claus, and each year he donates his time to be Santa Claus at length and night. He also has sponsored some events to benefit both the Speedway Relay for Life and the Tanya Isaac Foundation. So, we are pleased, on behalf of the Speedway Town Council and the Speedway Chamber of Commerce, to present a certificate, which you have, Mr. President, to Bob Lehman. So, if you want to come up, if you don't mind, I'll take your pictures.
Okay, Bob, come on down. Counselor Delisle will bring that certificate on up.
Okay, if I can get you guys' picture together, please. Thank you. And on behalf of the Chamber, we'd like to present you with a gift card to 1911. Thank you very much. And I'd like to encourage people to nominate somebody that they know in the community that maybe doesn't get a lot of exposure, but does a lot of incredible things for our community, and I know there's a lot of people out there, so if the Town Council has anybody that they would like to nominate, please send it to myself or Michelle Leidy, or anybody in the community can nominate people.
Okay. Bob, would you care to say a few words?
Thank you, very much.
Those were a few words, very well done.
Very much.
Thanks, Bob. Item number five, approval of notice to award the 2018 paving project bid. Wendell, would you please come up?
You can come up, Wendell, I'll explain briefly. So, there, this is the repaving plan for 2018. We've bid out the project as a whole. I think some maps were provided to Cable Commission, I don't know if they can throw some of those maps up, but if not, I don't think it's worth the time to go through line by line unless the council would like to hear that. But we have received six bids for the project in total. Several of them came in below what our engineer's estimate was, and up there, they're on the screen now, just so everyone can kind of see what we're looking at, and there's several maps that they'll cycle through. But we've received six bids, several of them were below the engineer's estimate, and we are recommending awarding the project to the lowest bid. We would appreciate council's approval to do so.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the approval of the bid tabulation and award of the agreement to Harding Group LLC as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the notice of the 2018 paving project bid to Harding Group. Are there any questions from the audience? Any from council?
Do have a question, I don't know if Wendell has anything else to say before we do, but one concern for me on any RFP, and this one is a good example, we've had different contractors do work in the town, I'm not sure you have an answer this evening, probably need to talk to attorneys about it, but over the years, we've had certain companies, vendors out there that have done good work, we've had others that have done so-so work, we've had some that have done very poor work. And the way that, you know, when it's awarded by the state, we have less opportunity to impact who it goes to, but when we've had problems in, I'm not going to name names here because it is what it is, but when we've had problems with vendors in the past, how does our RFP, or can our RFP process account for, manage those challenges? So, when we, if it's only about money, then the group with the lowest bid would get it, but surely if they're not performing well, we're going to pay me now or you pay me later can be a part of it. I think we've had problems on 25th Street as an example, we've had other problems where a company's done insufficient work or improper work, and we settle on that, but it'll certainly come back to us sooner than it would have before. How do we account for that or deal with that between?
Well, yeah. Go ahead first, Wendell, and then I'll jump in.
I'm not going to interrupt you, Bob. But what I do, I keep notes on all of our projects, and if there's issues on billings, material, workmanship, I note those. And when we put out bids, then that's where I'll go back to our legal and ask him if there's substantial information there to reject the lowest bid, if that would be the company involved in that. He would advise us on how to do that. But like you were saying, on our MPO projects and our state projects, our hands are somewhat tied. We are the paperwork people, the user of their money and stuff, so we have to follow their guidelines. But if we do have issues, we will share those back with those folks also. But I think our best thing would check with Bob and see our direction from him.
And certainly, one thing that you can do, if you have a particular contractor or contractors that you've been very dissatisfied with in the past, and you can go so far as to reject your bids as not a responsive bidder, responsible and responsive bidder. And certainly, if you would do that, if that particular contractor is the low bidder on a project, and you've had repeated problems of a substantial nature, and Wendell and I could bring that to you and suggest that you make detailed findings that they are not a responsible bidder, and move on to the next one. So, there are remedies, and as you mentioned, if it's an MPO or a state-funded project, you don't have quite as much latitude, but still there's an opportunity for input there too.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, because even beyond the work they do, there's groups that don't come in and pull the proper permits, they don't do the proper preparation. I know we've had that, just, you know, in different areas of town, and wanting to make sure we use qualified vendors that we know will do a good job, so that we don't have to pay for something sooner.
Yeah, and just on a side note there, is we have issues with billing, then we have engineering costs developed to verify all those numbers and stuff. So, those are things that we keep notes on, is if they affect our overall savings on the project, if there's a $10,000 or $20,000 difference in the project, we have to look at change order that comes through our cost of doing the job with them too, so.
Jacob and I, on the permitting issue, Jacob had mentioned that to me, and we're going to start working through some possible remedies that you may have, perhaps ordinances that you can adopt in the future that hopefully would alleviate some of those issues.
Great, thank you. Just to make it public, I mean, there are six, yeah, there are six bidders, but there's, the highest is $482,000, and the lowest is $358,000, so there's a significant amount of dollars that we save by going with the lowest bidder. And I'm not saying this one or that one are right or wrong from past history, I'm just saying there's a significant amount of money there, so there is a benefit to going with lower bids, but there's also a quality's factor. So, thanks for the responses.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, 4-0-1.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thanks, Wendell. Item number seven, approval of, I'm sorry, item number six, Resolution 2018-01, Resolution authorizing your representative signatory. Jacob?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So, this is a resolution that would authorize me to be the, as a Town Manager, the signatory on draws for our state revolving fund loan. Just to answer the first question and avoid all doubt, this does not give me permission to add debt or increase debt or take additional debt, it simply gives me the ability to draw funds that we've already borrowed and use them and put them to work towards a productive project. Currently, the signatory is a previous Town Manager, Barbara Lawrence, and I didn't call her, but I assume she doesn't feel like coming back and signing those documents, so this is a request to update the signatory so that I can draw the funds. Appreciate your approval.
Mr. President, I make a motion, we approve Resolution 2018-01.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2018-01. Is there any comment from the audience? Any from council?
Good catch.
Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pass is 5-0. Item number seven, approval of claims and utility adjustments. Monty?
Thank you, sir. Submitted to you a normal use of expenses, if you will, for the town during the period of December 23rd through January the 5th, and would appreciate your approval, please.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the claims as presented by Clerk Treasurer.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the claims as presented. Are there any comments or questions from the audience? Any from council?
I do have a question. On page two, about three-fourths of the way down, there's repayment of a temporary loan from Resolution 2017-something.
That's correct.
What is that?
That was the CCD, it's early part of the year, when we were paying for the ladder for the Fire Department, and it was $106,000 a year over a period of seven years, and CCD just didn't have the cash to do so. So, it was, I think it was 2017-8 on the resolution to do a temporary loan to, from the general fund to that, and this was the second payment, because we were obligated by law to pay it by the end of the year.
Okay.
This was one in early July, and this one in December, to pay it back.
Yeah, thank you.
So, it's been fully taken care of.
Any other questions? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pass is 5-0. Monty?
Thank you. Utility adjustments, same period of time, December 23rd through January the 5th, and you'll see those in, let's see, the total, I believe, was $764.42. One large one, if you will, that had to be taken care of, 636 of that, so again, I would ask for your approval.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the billing adjustment as presented by Clerk Treasurer.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the utility adjustments as presented by Clerk Treasurer. Are there any questions from the audience? Any from council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass is 5-0. Monty, anything else?
No, sir, that's all I have.
Well, thank you, Monty. Item number eight, report from department supervisors. We're going to start off with Parks and Recreation this evening.
Uh-huh.
Tammy?
I'll mix it up a little bit.
Threw me off guard there.
That's what I'm here for.
Okay, I will start off with an update on the Tribute Tree Program. Currently, we have received 21 donations for the spring planting, so this program is going very well, better than expected. We also received a payment today for 15 trees. That's for the tree that's going to be removed from the Willshaw Project. It falls into something called the Heritage Preservation, the tree's so large that we're required to replace it, and that company paid for those trees today. So, we have the money for that. And I've also received 13 inquiries of more people interested in the trees, so it continues to be very successful.
Tammy, where are those, sorry to interrupt, where are those trees going to be located, the 15 trees that are going to be?
We don't know yet, I was talking to Wendell about that today. I would like to see them located in different places around town versus the parks, because of the Tribute Tree Program being so successful. And Wendell has indicated there are a few areas that he needs trees for, so we're going to discuss that. He mentioned a couple around Crawfordville Road exit, and I can't remember where else, he said, but he was talking about a couple different places that would accommodate several of those trees. So, hopefully around town, we can get those 15 trees, oh, Main Street, I think, was the other place.
Okay.
So...
I had a quick question, too.
Sure.
Could you give us just a quick rundown of the Tribute Tree Program, what it costs, and who to contact for more information?
Yeah, it's $250, and you get a tree planted, and you can have a plaque with a memorial or a tribute, or just support of. We have one group, the 1965 Class at Speedway High School, their members are starting to send in donations for a tree, and it sounds like they may want that to be ongoing, so once we hit the 250 mark, they'll earmark the tree, and then they're going to continue that. They would contact myself at the Parks Department, tsmith@speedwayin.gov, or call me 317-246-4125. You could check on the website, and Speedway Parks and Rec Facebook page, I'll have something on there soon, too. As a matter of fact, I think I already do, but probably from a couple months ago. So, yeah, is there?
That's perfect, thank you.
Okay, there's eight trees right now that we've got on the form that they can choose from. Any more questions about trees? Okay. I am going to be attending the Indiana Parks and Recreation Association Conference at the end of this month. I was one of 20 scholarship winners, so I'm kind of excited about that. So, I'm able to go as a scholarship winner, and it'll be a great time for me to network with other people. I signed up to participate in their mentoring program, since I'm new to the department, and they've already matched me up with someone through Indy Parks that will be contacting me, and I'll be getting with them while I'm there those three days, and have a mentor, so I'm excited about that and meeting this person. And then, I also wanted to talk about, I met with Bev with Speedway Trails, and we were discussing kind of coordinating efforts for the ongoing development and continuation of the trails, and having kind of the Parks and Trails work together a little bit, so I'm excited about that. And I also wanted to indicate that Trails is having a fundraiser on February 6th, if anybody wants a flyer. I'll post these on the Facebook page, so go out to Dawson's and support the Trails, because it helps the whole community. Summer concerts, I've been working on that, and I've got the sixth date scheduled, the four Thursdays in June, July 12th and July 26th. And I believe I have all the concerts actually set, all the bands set. July, or I'm sorry, June 14th, that's Flag Day, it happens to fall on a Thursday this year. So, I'm real excited, because I wanted to try to make that a combination Military Appreciation Day in conjunction with the concert, and do something a little bit different than a traditional band. So, we're going to have music entertainment, as well as a couple of stand-up comedians, they're already on board, and Representative Carly Mason is excited to help out with that. So, her and I are going to be kind of coordinating some efforts and getting some veteran services involved, and hopefully have some booths set up, information for veterans and military people. So, I look for this to be maybe a very well-attended day, maybe more so than in the past, I hope. We are going to be needing sponsors on that, so I would, if anybody has any contacts or any of the businesses, I'm going to start reaching out to them pretty heavily over the next month or two. I would like to meet them in person and kind of, you know, introduce myself, and hopefully let them know some of our visions for the Parks and the summer series. And then lastly, I'm starting a volunteer program, I think I've mentioned it slightly, but I want to encourage interested community members and corporate members, that we're going to have various opportunities for them to volunteer in the parks, especially with the trees, the amount of trees, it's going to be pretty heavy for Mike to do by himself, and I would like to see us maybe have some big event someday that we can coordinate with corporate volunteers, and have community volunteers as well, and just make it a big day of planting all these trees for our park. But I hope to schedule maybe a little information gathering with people who are interested, introduce myself, and just go over some opportunities that they may have for volunteering, and the benefits of volunteering for our community. That's all I have.
That's great. Any questions? Thank you. Thanks, Tammy.
Thank you.
Sticking with the ladies-first theme going here, we're going to go Water Works with Mary Amicost.
It's been kind of a busy month. We've had two main breaks, and both of them were on the really, really bad cold days. Our staff is incredible, got out there, got the water back on for everybody. But with the real cold, we have not been able to read meters this past month. Once the temperature gets below 20 degrees, if we open the meter kits, there's a real good chance they're going to freeze, and we've got them freezing all over town anyways. So, this upcoming month's bill is going to be estimated, and that's going to be compounded because people are using water like crazy, they're dripping their faucets so their pipes don't freeze. So, this next bill is probably going to be a normal bill, but the following bill is probably going to be high. And by that time, people will have typically forgotten that they've used so much water in January. So, we just kind of want to give a heads up that your bill, not the bill you get this month, but the following bill is probably going to be high. We're typically, at this time of year, we're using about 1.6, 1.7 million gallons, we're putting out 2.0, 2.1, 2.2, just because of all the faucets. But, you know, even with people dripping their faucets, we've had a lot of people that have had frozen lines, it's just, it's been really bitter cold. But we've been keeping all the water running, and it's going really well. Any questions? Sorry.
No.
Thanks a lot.
Just one maybe comment or compliment, I mean, there's been a couple of breaks, line breaks with the freezing, and the crews are out there right away, and really, really cold temperatures, so appreciate the work that they're all doing to keep the water running.
Yeah, they're pretty impressive.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Next up, Police Chief Jim Campbell. Sorry to wake you up.
I'm really okay with ladies-first, it's not a problem. In fact, if you'd have skipped over me, I probably wouldn't have said that. First of all, we've talked for months about Kalia and Kalia reaccreditation. I'd like to tell you, our assessors came second week of December, and as far as those assessors go, we think we've passed. They had no major issues. In fact, we probably received some of the highest compliments. You know, the one had been a retired police chief out of Ohio, said it was without a doubt one of the best police departments he had visited in all his time as an assessor. And that doesn't come easy, and I take that as a compliment to the men and women of the Speedway Police Department, but also the community. We had a great response, you know, from individuals who spoke to those assessors, you know, we introduced them, everybody from Kenhold, Bowles at the IMS, and it was very impressive, you know, how the community turned out and supported the department in this reaccreditation. So, we still have to go before the Board itself. They look at a lot of your statistical data, you know, whether that be your pursuits, your arrests, you know, some of the, I guess what you'd call major policy on some of those kinds of activities. If all goes well in March, we'll actually receive that accreditation. So, and there are several communities, IMPD has finally, you know, sought their accreditation. You know, obviously, there's two or three other departments around that will also be attending. It's kind of interesting how many from, you know, just this area will be going. So, anyway, I want to thank the community for what they've done publicly, the men and women of the Police Department. Secondly, I probably should start letting Norm do this, but, you know, for 2017, our drug drop box, and I say drug, it's medication pharmaceuticals, for the most part, 464 pounds of pharmaceuticals have been put in that drop box, which would have gone down the sink.
Most likely.
Most likely. Lastly, I just want to tell you, it's hard to believe, but we're already putting out the dates for our race meetings, for our Public Safety Committee. We'll start that in February. We've contacted all the state, local, federal agencies that, you know, will be involved in that planning, so it's here. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Next up, Fire Chief Bob Fishburne.
I wasn't sure. I'm okay with that, too. Want to let you know, and wanted to also thank Eagle Creek Courts, our guys completed our ice and topwater rescue training today. With the temperatures going down, and we may lose some of the ice, they wanted to finish that up. So, Captain Ray with the Station 89 Engine Company, and Chief Milhorne made sure we were able to get, we got some guys trained last year, and then we had some warm weather, so we still had two shifts to get that done with. January the 16th, our two rookies start the Fire Academy with IFD and six candidates from Wayne, so it'll be a three-department academy. At the end of this month, we'll be sending six of our firefighters. It'll be a different six than we sent to Texas A&amp;M the last time, and this time, they're going to be going for what is called an Industrial Emergency Class. Chief Milhorne was already scheduled to go, so he's going to keep that commitment. This doesn't cost us anything. It's a great program that we have through Marathon, but it benefits Praxair, it benefits Marathon, benefits Heritage, Crystal Clean, Coca-Cola, all of our corporate partners, big industry-type emergencies. Gets our guys to get some really good training for very little cost. That's a time of year when, you know, vacation's not too heavy, so it's a great time to send them, we look forward to that. Before I close, I do want to talk a little bit about space heater, heating safety. I know you've seen on the news where people are just trying to stay warm. We understand that, but I thought it would be good to put on the scroll with SCTV, and they're going to be putting on the scroll that runs continually some winter safety tips for heating, and all of those sorts of things, but especially space heaters. IFD has had several where people have plugged multiple space heaters into power strip, and then into the wall. It just will not, it will not hold, and obviously, you go to sleep, and it catches fire. We've got those tips, and we also understand that some people may not be able to afford to pay their heating bill and those sorts of things. So, I spoke with Wayne Township Trustee today, and we live in Wayne Township, and there are programs that are available to our residents. And Andy Harris's office is at 5401 West Washington Street, the phone number there is 317-241-4191. The township itself has several programs to assist with this, but then they also house a not-for-profit called Energy Ass... a not-for-profit called Energy Assistance Program. It's based at the trustee's office. You can set it up. It isn't always, you know, it isn't always income-based. It's need-based. They'll set up an interview, and we just want people to be safe. And so if you need assistance, you know, we certainly don't want you to be using your range or your oven to heat your home. And we've had, you know, we've had several fires in the area that that's been part of the cause. So look at the information we're putting on the scroll, and if you need assistance, get in touch with the trustee's office. As always, if you have any questions, you can call the fire department number, which is area code 317-246-4360 with any questions, and we'll follow up and get back with you. So if you guys don't have any questions?
That's it.
That's it.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. Next up, Waste Water Department, Warren Berry.
Good evening. I would like to acknowledge the police department in providing that service, but also, I want to thank those that are using it, because if the residents and people didn't use it, it would be useless. So thanks to them for participating in that. I don't have a lot to report, mainly my bugs are sluggish. You've heard me talk many times, you know, affectionately about my bugs, but, you know, that's what does the work down there. And these below-zero temperatures, they're kind of like me. They just get a little slower, a little more sluggish. So we are having a few operational issues, and we're doing everything that we can to try to keep that to a minimum. In particular, the bugs that do the ammonia treatment, they are, they're kind of sensitive to the temperatures, so they lose their effectiveness a little bit, so our ammonia levels go up a little bit in our effluent. And so it's just one of those things where we have a constant struggle to try to keep within those limits, and we're doing what we can. And we've also had a few freezing problems. We've had some valves that have frozen, some equipment that's frozen up. We've had to thaw it out, but for the most part, we're doing all right. That's basically it.
That's it. Any questions?
Thanks, Norm.
Thanks, Norm. Thank you, your bug's force, too. Last and certainly not least, Wendell Walters.
Good evening, Council, once again. Just some updates on the public works. The Meadowwood Tree Program has been completed. All the trees are down, 101 trees have been removed with Tammy's replanting program. We have a program that we're trying to get outside the main forest area, is to reestablish out on our walk trail area. So next spring and fall, it should start looking pretty good up there. We'll get some grass going back in where we've taken all the trees out, get some greenery back in there. An update on the B&amp;O Trail project, you know, it was awarded last month. We are still waiting on a pre-con meeting. We have made our payment for our part of the construction cost on that project, so we should be getting that notice in a couple of weeks. Once we get that all lined out and scheduled, we'll get that posted out to everyone so they know what's going on. 16th and Lynnhurst Project is complete. We got the okay to take down all the construction signs today, so that is up and running, and it's doing how we anticipated through design and everything. We're moving traffic through a lot easier. We're not getting the evening backups and stuff, so a good improvement there. We've had a request that will be coming to Jacob, hopefully tomorrow or Wednesday. IPL, working on the Willshaw Project, has got to do installation of power lines underground, which they've got to come from the Wilcox Parking Lot, come across 16th and Main, and then back into the project area. So we've asked them for a maintenance of traffic plan. Once they provide that to us and it's okay, we'll ask for approval on that. It's going to be some restrictions at 16th and Main eastbound. We have to close that eastbound intersection to get these concrete ducts in. And then, once we start crossing Main Street, we're going to do it in lanes. We'll have traffic officers out there doing control so we can keep everything moving. So just some construction issues will be coming up here in the next couple of weeks, probably a week. And they were saying it's, they're requesting from January 22nd until February 2nd to complete that project, but more than likely, it'll be, once we get into the ground, it'll be a four-day project, so all-weather dependent. And just to let you know, the snow trucks are out tonight. Be careful in the morning, we're probably going to have black ice. We've had the meltdown today. Trucks have been out pushing off the sludge and the slop and re-salting, so just be, everybody be careful in the morning, because we're going to drop to 23, and everything will refreeze. Any questions?
Wendell, how's our equipment holding up?
We've had a couple of issues. Rob and his staff has jumped on and got it all back in shape, and then I think we have another event coming in Friday, so we'll put it to work again. But overall, equipment's holding up pretty good. We've used about approximately 250 tons of salt since Christmas Eve. With these temperatures, slow activator, we need the traffic, and the guys have done a real good job. Thank you.
Thanks, Wendell. Item number nine, report from our town manager, Jacob.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. One I want to touch on, it's gotten a little bit of media attention recently, is the closing of Rollins Retirement Club on 25th Street, kind of out by High School Road, for those that aren't familiar with it. Just want folks in general just to be aware that we understand what's going on, and we're monitoring the property. Our coenforcement's done a fantastic job of staying on top of the situation, and we're going to make sure that the property is secure. Just want folks to be aware that we are aware and monitoring what's going on there. Also want to kind of jump on what one of the projects Wendell talked about, the B&amp;O Trail is. It's a Rails-a-Trails program, I think people are familiar with, and it sounds easy to say, but it's pretty difficult to pull off. There's some complications with the easements and property acquisition and rights away, and he's done a great job with it, as has the Trails Group and working with Bev, so lots of compliments there. I think it's going to be really exciting to see that come through. It's one of these projects that I think even people don't realize what a significantly positive impact it's going to have on our community, so I'm really excited about seeing that go forward. And like Wendell said, it's been bid, and we're excited to get that going here, starting in the spring. And then also, probably what I'm happiest to report right now, we have received notification from the state that our letter of map provision request from the Dry Run Ditch Project has been approved by the state. I don't want anybody to get too excited. It's just, it's one step, but it's a really big one that moves us forward to get a pretty good chunk of Speedway out of the flood zone. It will be going now to FEMA for their approval, and we don't, we've been told a range. I think we can expect it to take at least a year for them to do their work. And for those that didn't see on camera, Counselor Rakes made quite an expression there. And I'm frustrated, and I know, I get a lot of calls on this, just as people are getting a mortgage or they're trying to refinance, with the frustration, it's one of these things where so much work has gone on over years, frankly, and our, I know Norm and Wendell have been working on this for a long, long time. So it's exciting that it is really fun, the process, even though we do have, time-wise, a little bit further to go. But again, it's a really exciting step. We're happy to get that notification, and now we just, it's in the hands of FEMA.
Yeah. Me, I'm going to make comment on that. I appreciate, too, the work that our staff's done, the people in the public that have, you know, the residents that have spent time, energy, been a part of the solutions as well. And I would like to see, you know, what is it that we have to do from our state rep to, excuse me, our congressional representatives, our senators, to push for FEMA to make these changes, because this is dollars out of people's pockets today that they can, in the future, spend on their homes or just spend taking care of their family, whatever they need to do. And nothing's changing in terms of things that we have to do going forward, except that we're spending money as residents, and I'd like to see, make sure that our residents keep those monies in their pocket sooner than later. So we'll maybe make something, you know, I'd like to suggest that we put something together to send to our representatives at a federal level to get a push for FEMA to take action sooner than later. If you want my help with that, I'd be glad to do that, but I just, it's not my district in particular. It's a couple of other councilors, I believe, maybe three, and just want to make sure that we do everything we can to lighten the load on our residents.
Absolutely agree completely. And actually, two offices, Representative Carson and Senator Young's offices have said, hey, let us know when that's coming up. Representative Carson in particular has worked with FEMA in the past, so their office has extended that invitation to, hey, let us know when that's official. So like, our engineers are packaging it now to get everything submitted to FEMA, but as soon as that hits, we'll be notifying them and taking them up on their offer. But that is a good suggestion. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Jacob. Item number 10, report from our town attorney, Bob.
I have nothing to report, Mr. President.
Well, thank you. Item 11, reports from our council members. We'll start with Counselor Eileen Fisher.
I just want to say, in regards to the trees for Meadowwood, I have to say that it looks much nicer. I was a little concerned when I heard that there's going to be 101 trees coming down, but you go through there and it's a little bit clearer. I think it's going to be easier in the summertime for our police department to identify if there's any issues going on as they're driving by over there. So it'd be interesting to see where the new trees will be going, but other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Next up, Counselor Jason Delisle.
Nothing for me tonight.
Counselor Gary Ricks.
Just a couple of reminders, and then maybe a question back to Jacob. The date of the town is the 24th of February, and we invite all residents and business people that want to come to that. I think we're still planning to hold that Indianapolis Power and Light Speedway Media Center we've held the last few years. It's a great venue for that, and just want to remind folks of that. Then the War Memorial Project, I know the answer to this, but I'll go ahead and throw this to you, Jacob. What's the status of that?
So we have continued our talks with Indianapolis Power and Light to acquire that property. They have given their approval to do that. There's still some legal issues and some bond things that our town attorney, Bob Clutter's, sort of, dotting some i's and crossing some t's, but I think we feel pretty good about it at this point. We hope to be able to close later this month, but it's very much in process, and I look forward to being able to confirm that we've been able to purchase it.
Great. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor and Vice President Dave Lindsey.
Just a couple of things. Students of the junior high, they should have received a letter in their report cards, which were all As, I'm sure, for all the students there. But there is a, it's been rescheduled, the date in the report cards was wrong, it couldn't be held that day, but the media, a call-out meeting for Motegi is going to be held Tuesday, January 16th at 6:30, and that's at the cafeteria at the junior high, and that trip is planned for October. So they're wanting to have a call-out to see how many students would be interested in going to Motegi this year. Encourage every junior high student that even thinks they might be wanting to do it to attend that. It's a great, great program. Encourage everybody to go to it. And then, spoke to a couple council members about this, and they encouraged me to tell the story. Last Wednesday, in our beloved, great Indiana weather, was supposed to be held a girls' basketball game at Speedway High School. And I arrived a little bit early, as I always do, and half the power to the high school was out because a transformer or a fuse had broken or had popped, or whatever the term is. And Power and Light shows up, they say, they try to put the fuse back, and it pops immediately. They said it's a transformer, it's going to be a three-hour repair, and we're 20 minutes from when the game was supposed to start. So Brian Avery, who's the AD at the high school, makes a call to, I'm not for sure who, from the junior high, but they made a phone call to the junior high, and they made the immediate decision to move the game to the junior high. So everybody at the high school, and one reason this was done, the team that the girls were playing was from Edinburgh, so they had a little bit of dry that they had to do, so they didn't think it would be fair to send them back home without playing. So everybody goes to the junior high, the team gets there, and I walk in and I see Mr. Maple, who's the AD at the junior high, who was sick that day, left dinner from his family to start getting the junior high set up, and I saw Mr. Roseborough, who's the principal of the junior high with a mop. Mind you, this is on winter break. He's cleaning up the gym, getting the gym set up. Mr. Disney shows up, Mr. Grove shows up, and I want to publicly thank them for taking time away from their break to go to the junior high so a girls' basketball team can play basketball in December. And that, to me, shows, I guess, the things that make Speedway the town that it is. And it was incredible to see a principal of the G Junior High with a mop that was cleaning up a basketball court. Really want to thank them for all that. And with that, that's all I have, Mr. President.
All right. Thanks, Dave. Item number 12 is my report, in which I don't have one this evening, so with that, I will adjourn this meeting at 7:46. Thanks for coming.